Yep.
Perfect, thank you.
That's interesting. Whatever.
Okay, we can start at 6:30.
Okay. All right. We're on.
Hey, they'll be starting the broadcast in just a moment.
It's actually on right now, so we're ready.
It's on, so you're ready to go.
All set?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Plastow. I called this Thursday, August 27, 2020. Plastow GBA to order at 6:32 PM. As the Chair of the Plastows on Board of Adjustment, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-4 is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the meeting. Please note that there is no curve and listen to contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, we are confirming that we are providing public access to the meeting by telephone. Members of the public wishing to attend this meeting electronically may call the following conference call number: access code 900-532-276. Additional public access by video or other electronic means will be available as follows. We are utilizing the GoToWebinar platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during the meeting through the GoToWebinar platform, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting by clicking on the following webinar address: Provide public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. Legal notice was sent to all abutters for each application and was published in the Eagle Tribune newspaper with information on how to access the meeting. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting that a member of the public wishes to speak will be recognized during any public comment or public hearing. The GoToWebinar platform has both a raise your hand and a question-and-answer feature that allows attendees to alert that they have a question. Please note that all questions submitted through the Q&amp;A each must contain your address and will be read into the record. Other access to the meeting, the meeting will also be broadcast on Plastow Access Cable, Channel 17, and will be livestreamed on the Town website at www-plastow.com. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via conference call or GoToWebinar, the meeting will be adjourned and be rescheduled at a later time. Dee, could you please read the roll call, please?
Peter Bilo is excused. Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
John Glenn is excused. Jonathan Gifford?
Attending remotely, no one else present.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Mr. Lloyd, I was supposed to ask you that, too.
Attending remotely alone.
Thank you. Ethan, Gary Ingham? Gary Ingham?
Gary, I am on you. Gary, I am still on you.
It's showing that he's not muted. Is your microphone unplugged, Gary?
Light headphones.
There you go.
There you go.
I'm getting rid of headphones.
Okay.
I'm here, attending remotely alone in this.
Okay, thank you. Ethan Conley?
Here, attending remotely alone.
Jim Unger?
Here, attending remotely alone.
Also would like to note for the record that we have a new applicant for alternate member of the planning board, Barbara Burry, who is attending remotely. Barbara, could you let us know you're here and whether or not anybody's with you? You're going to turn your mic on for me, Barb. Are you there?
I'm here.
There we go.
I am here and attending with no one else present. Loves up the dogs, but they don't care.
Thank you. You have five voting members this evening. I do want to, there was one quick question that I want to make sure that somebody got the answer to. It was part of your speech at the beginning there, Mr. Chair, but there was a question asked of what it means to be in listen-only mode. All attendees are in listen-only mode with all their microphones muted. There is a raise-your-hand feature if you have a question. They won't be opened up until the appropriate time in the program for questions. The Chair will let you know when that is, and then we will unmute you, let you know you're unmuted, and then you can state your name and address for the record and ask your question.
Okay. Gary, you're on, this is pledge allegiance.
I would be honored. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Gary. Dee, I'd like to appoint Ethan Conley and Jim Unger as voting members tonight. You're welcome. About a minute. Has anyone ever, has everybody asked, received them and went over them? Any questions on them? Any changes anybody would like to make?
Looked good to me.
Good to me.
Ethan, you good?
I need seven minutes.
Okay. Dee, can we have a vote? I'd like to make a motion, quickstep them.
I'll second that motion.
I'm sorry, the motion was Mr. Lloyd seconded by Mr. Conley? Is that correct?
You want to do the roll call, Dee?
Was that correct for the motion for the minutes was made by Mr. Lloyd and seconded by Mr. Conley? Is that correct? I'm sorry, the motion was made by Mr. Lloyd and seconded by Mr. Conley? Is that correct?
I think someone else made the motion.
I think the motion is correct.
Thank you. So the roll call will be... Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
John Gifford?
Yes.
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Ethan Conley?
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Yes.
Thank you, your vote is 5-0-0.
Do you call our case, please?
Case number 20-20, a request from 125 Cottage Plaza LLC and Gerald Carboni for a variance from Article 5.
Dee, if you can hand me a break, not up.
Let's hope this is better.
Can hit. Want to try that again?
Yeah, sure. Case number 20-20, a request from Route 125 Cottage Plaza LLC and Gerald Carboni for a variance from Article 5, Section 220, 31, and Table 220, 32B, per N.B. to allow the conversion of the first-floor commercial space to residential apartments, a non-permitted use. The property is located at 93A Plastow Road, Tax Map 27, Lot 261, in the Commercial One District. Gerald R. Carboni is the property owner of record. I have a request in this matter for a continuance. This has been received from McMillan Law Offices. Please consider this a request for a continuance of the hearing on 20-20, Route 125 Cottage Plaza LLC, Gerald Carboni, which was scheduled for this evening, August 27. Mr. Carboni is in the process of obtaining written consent from Prime Energy for the requested use variance, but unfortunately does not believe he will have it the same in time for the hearing. If the board is amenable to continuing this, we can just announce that it is continued to the September 24 meeting.
Yes, that's fine. I agree with the board, we can continue that.
To the September 24?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Continuing on to the next one. This is case number 20-21, a request from Mammoth Acquisitions Company LLC for a variance from Article 5, Section 220, 32I-A to permit a structure to be placed within 12.3 feet of the property line on Main Street, where 50 feet is the minimum. The property is located at 2 Main Street, Tax Map 24, Lot 43, in the C1 District. The property owner of record is AC Plastow LLC, Dick Anagnos, manager. There are three related, this is a total of three related cases. Do you want me to read them all together or would you like them one at a time?
I prefer them one at a time. Would any objections, any input with board? Is that okay? Everybody?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do them one at a time, Dee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is the applicant on mic?
Give me just one quick second here. I'm new to this run of the show here, so bear with me.
Done.
I'm going to unmute Mr. Malinowski. I'm going to unmute Mr. Kaufman. I'm going to unmute. I know there's a couple more out there.
This is Mike from Allen Major, Ari Pollock as well, Dee.
Hold on a second, let me work my way up the list. Ari Pollock was the other one you wanted, Mr. Malinowski?
Yes, ma'am.
And everybody else can be off mic for now?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, this is Ari Pollock of Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell. I'm appearing this evening for your applicant, Mammoth Acquisitions LLC. Mammoth has the property under purchase agreement with AC Plastow LLC and has supplied documentation of the owner's permission to pursue the variance applications that we've submitted for your consideration. With me this evening are co-presenters, Michael Kaufman from Mammoth and Mike Malinowski from Allen and Major. Michael Kaufman had hoped to address the board briefly before Michael Malinowski and I present the merits of the applications. Mike Kaufman, are you unmuted?
I think so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Should I begin?
Please.
All right. Members of the board, my name is Michael Kaufman. I work for the development company proposing this project. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you with a revised concept plan for the redevelopment of 2 Main Street. I just want to take a moment to update you on what we have done since our prior application. The development team and Convenient MD, as our end user, reviewed the board's concerns about safety, sightlines, and vehicle access. We listened carefully to your comments and have attempted to adjust for your concerns in presenting this new application. We also met with staff to review the new plan. And per the staff's recommendation and in response to your prior comments, we also asked our traffic engineer to submit a memo that addresses the trip generation and site distance issues brought up previously. We believe this proposal better fits the site while providing Convenient MD with a platform for its operations. We conform to all other aspects of the zoning ordinance, including open space and parking. This use is one of the lowest traffic generators allowed in this zoning district. The tenant will be a tremendous community resource, especially during this current pandemic. We hope you will agree that this plan addresses the vast majority of the concerns raised and improves the concept. We look forward to working with you, the planning board, and town staff to hopefully see this project built and delivered to the community. I'll now turn the presentation over to Mike Malinowski to talk in greater detail about the proposed plan and the variance requests.
Good evening, this is Michael from Allen and Major Associates. As Mr. Kaufman had described, we were before you with a slightly different plan. We listened to the concerns of the board, as well as staff, and have come up with this new plan. We have maintained the building footprint that was previously proposed at 5,140 square feet. We have realigned the building parallel to Hazelton Street, situating it roughly over the footprint of the existing building. We will maintain the driveway that is currently on Hazelton Street, also known as Route 121A. Currently, it is an oversized one-way in. We will maintain a one-way in and narrow that driveway down. From what we've seen, due to its width, that there is the potential of illegal turns out of that driveway. So hopefully by narrowing that down, that will eliminate that. We have also maintained the driveway out to Main Street, which was a two-directional, and that will also be maintained. As you had seen before, we had several variances relative to setbacks. By placement of the building, we have eliminated the need for the front setback to Plastow Road, which was 50 feet. Currently, we have 73.7 feet of clearance from Plastow Road and provided parking along that front. One of the concerns that the board had had was relative to site distance at that intersection. And by, with this new plan, the whole front of the site is low and open, providing visual visibility at the intersection of Hazelton Street. We have 28 parking spaces, which are required by the zoning rules. We are before you requesting three variances, two setback variances and one for signage. The first setback is relative to Hazelton Street. The setback along Hazelton Street is 50 feet. We are requesting 14 feet, with the current setback at 11.5. The second setback variance is along Main Street, which is also 50 feet. We are providing 12.3 feet along that side as well. We will maintain landscape buffers around the perimeter of the site, as required. And Ari can go into more detail relative to the variance criteria.
Thanks, Michael and Mike. With respect to setbacks and legal requirements, I think that case 2021 was read in, and that is actually the setback variance relative to Main Street. Hazleton is the next matter. So focusing on them separately and addressing the legal requirements, it's important for both variances, frankly, to recognize that this is a small, pre-existing, non-conforming lot that is very unique in its shape and configuration. And I know that you've got the concept plan on your screen, and you can see that there are roads on both, on all three sides, one, of course, being Route 125, a state highway. The lot has no shared boundary with any private abutter, and as I've described for you in the past, it's essentially an island within a sea of public roadways. Very unique situation. The largest setback in your Plastow ordinance is 50 feet, in terms of the different setbacks applied in different districts. And this is a 50-foot setback applied from each of the three road frontages. In this regard, the three setbacks converge at the center and yield a small and frankly unworkable building envelope. And so if you were to try to fully conform with all three setbacks, and in this concept, we're complying fully with one asking for relief from two. And the building was essentially placed in the center of the triangle that results, you'd end up with a building envelope that's plus or minus 2,000 square feet. And a developer would then need to surround the building with parking and drive aisles and entrances and landscaping and lighting and all the other elements of the site plan. But not many, if any, of the permitted uses in the district, which include retail, restaurants, places of worship, really would be able to function on that size plate or building envelope. And Convenient MD is no different. The plate that we're proposing is 5,100 square feet or 5,550 square feet. And this is a design and layout that they have used successfully in other locations, and frankly is smaller than some of their other locations. The proposed concept shows the building positioned closest to Hazleton Street, and this layout avoids entirely a variance from Route 125 and places the parking adjacent to the curb cuts that are existing on Main Street and Hazleton Street. The setback to Plastow, or to Route 125, Plastow Road is actually over 70 feet. So we really have been successful in getting away from that frontage and getting away from the intersection of Hazleton and Plastow Road. The proposed layout avoids any alteration or improvements over the state border with Massachusetts, which frankly is yet another complication that this small lot has to bear. And the existing building on the lot today, which is about 2,500 square feet over two floors, is itself about 11 feet off of the northern boundary. And so we're actually going to decrease the nonconformity even while asking for a 14-foot variance. So the building would be 14 feet instead of 11 feet. To address some of the traffic and site distancing concerns that were raised with respect to the prior application, and we're obviously not trying to step on the toes of the planning board, who we know will do a full site review if we're able to reach that stage. We did engage TEC, which stands for the Engineering Corp., to examine intersection impacts and site distance concerns. And we did submit a report from TEC in your application packet, and we certainly can answer questions with respect to that this evening, if the board members wish. I'm hopeful that moving the building away from that intersection will resolve some of those concerns. And so, in conclusion, and with respect to the five specific criteria applicable to variances, in this case, the 14-foot setback, although frankly the arguments are the same for the setback to Main Street, the relief requested is not contrary to the public interest because the lot is already considerably nonconforming relative to the current structure.
I'm sorry, I need to interrupt for a second. I had lost a member there for a staff a second. Looks like everybody's back.
No, I heard it all.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no problem, can I continue?
Yes.
Thank you. So the other portion of the public interest amendment was that the proposed professional office, which in this case is medical, is permitted by right in the commercial district. The spirit and intent of the ordinance is served because frankly setbacks are intended to separate and distance users and structures from one another, which in this case is actually accomplished by the unique shape of the lot and the lack of any direct abutter sharing a boundary. The, there is substantial justice in granting the variance because even with the setback variances, the lot can safely support access, compliant parking and utilities and landscaping, and otherwise comply with the municipal ordinance. The values of the surrounding properties won't be diminished. First and foremost, the use is permitted in the district, but the neighborhood has become increasingly commercial in this area. And the site, as we mentioned, can be designed to conform with the site plan regulations. The literal enforcement will result in a hardship because the small, uniquely shaped triangular lot really can't be developed without zoning relief if you give effect to all three front setbacks and the resulting building envelope. And differently and frankly aligned with the holding of the New Hampshire Supreme Court in the branch, the Sommersworth decision, we're asking the board to recognize, quote, "a proper balance between the legitimate aims of municipal planning and the hardship that may sometimes result from the literal enforcement of the zoning ordinances," end quote. So that's our formal presentation, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and we're happy to respond to your questions or other questions that may come up. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions? Nobody?
Is there any way we could get a more up-to-date traffic? I mean, we're working on a 2015. I know COVID changed some of the dynamics for 2020, but since 2015, there's been a ton of construction in that that has changed by five additional businesses. I don't know if this is, I wasn't attending at the last meeting, but I don't know if this has been brought up.
Yeah, it's a great question. It wasn't brought up last time because the study was submitted with this application. We did ask the same question, frankly, and COVID has skewed everything, and we appreciate that. So we wanted to go back to a baseline that was without the influence of the pandemic, but a background factor was applied. And so, you know, you end up with a pretty conservative estimation of traffic. And as I said, we did have our experts take a look specifically at that issue and also the issue of site distances with the placement of the building. And we came up in good shape on both.
I'm not sure you understood his question. This thing from 2015 pandemic has nothing to do with 2015, and there's been a heck of a lot of new construction since 2015, and this was done up. Back in 2015, Hazelton Ave/121 is not the road then that it was now.
We understand that, sir. Dee, we have our traffic engineer, I believe, on the webinar, and she could probably.
I'm sorry, I need to know who's speaking, please.
I'm sorry, this is Michael Kaufman.
Thank you.
Our traffic engineer, I believe, is present, and if she can be given permission to speak, I'm sure she can address this concern better than any of the rest of us.
What's the name so I can unmute?
Shoot, Liz? Yeah. Mike, Ari, help me.
Liz Altman of TEC.
Sorry.
I'm sorry?
Liz Altman of TEC, the author of the memo.
You are now unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Liz Altman. I am the Director of Transportation Planning with TEC. I'm the author of the technical memo. And the reason that we felt fairly comfortable using the 2015 volumes is that they are conservative. They are lower than what is probably you saw eight months ago out on the, at the intersection, but they're, you know, much higher than what you would see today. So we felt comfortable in comparing the amount of traffic that would be generated by this site to those numbers. And what, basically, we just wanted to indicate that the additional traffic generated by this site to the intersection of Hazelton and Plastow is minimal. It's within a day's fluctuation. So that's the point that we were making with making that comparison. And really, a higher volume with all the additional developments would just make the impact of the proposed building even lower. And really, a higher volume with all the additional development would just make the impact of the proposed building even lower.
I understand.
I'm sorry, I don't understand where you're coming with that. Because, and I could be wrong here, and if I am, I apologize. Somebody else correct me. But five years ago, Main Street, at that point of the intersection, was a two-lane road that headed out to 125. In the past five years, that has stopped. And you have all of the traffic coming down Main Street to 125, now going down Hazelton Ave. So you have a much, much higher increase amount of traffic than five years ago.
So if I could just respond quickly to that, what we tried to do with this memo is address. Yep, apologies, Dee. This is Ari Pollock.
Thank you.
What we tried to do with the memo is address some of the concerns that were raised last time through. And not get into a lot of the planning aspects of site design and potential for off-site impacts and traffic mitigation. But to at least show that with respect to this use, any increase in traffic generation is minimal. And frankly, the site distances, which I recall being the larger concern, were going to be assisted, if anything, by the relocation and replacement of the building. And so your questions are good ones. They're not irrelevant. But they're more of a planning nature, and we absolutely expect to be more engaged in a traffic conversation for site plan review. We're shopping today for setback variance and a wall sign variance.
Well, that setback, excuse me, John Gifford, that setback variance and that wall variance that you're looking at, is this on Hazelton that you're dealing or are you on Main?
So the setback that. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut somebody off.
The Main Street setback.
Okay, because on the Main Street setback, your line of sight, you have an egress and an entrance that are probably 20 feet from the corner of that. Directly across that street now, there is also an egress and an entrance to another building that wasn't in use five years ago. There's also two other entrances in that area. So when we talk about line of sight and you talk about this 14 feet, to me, you've got multiple traffic issues coming and going right across from one another. It's a concern of mine. So it does affect that setback that we're talking, or that you're referencing.
Maybe I could ask Liz to discuss the site distance issue because it is addressed in her memo.
Yeah, this is Liz Altman.
But quite honestly, the memo still noted, I mean, all of these accounts are from 2015. It really doesn't express current situation of the traffic in that area. In my humble opinion, it's been magnified. And quite honestly, they tried to drive off of Route 125 more onto Main Street by putting a larger entrance onto Main Street to defer traffic in that area. This was all done in the Havel section, so Plastow has no control over that. But it is something that's controlling that traffic.
If I could just jump in for half a second, this is Michael Kaufman. Members of the board, I completely understand your thinking as far as it relates to 2015. What we're trying to demonstrate is in 2015, the traffic volume was less than it is today. So in comparing the impact to 2015 and showing that it was de minimis. If you then incorporate the further traffic generation that we would see today, the impact for the traffic, and I think our primary focus, because the last time when we were presenting, we didn't get into specifics about curb cut placement and things that perhaps are a site plan review issue. It was strictly regarding the traffic in this area is terrible today. And anything that goes in this property will exacerbate what is already a problem. And what we're simply trying to demonstrate is how little traffic this type of use generates. This type of facility, when it is booming, sees somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 to 80 patients per day. So that relates to approximately 70 to 80 vehicle trips in and out of this facility over a 12-hour period. Where we really weren't attempting to address where we put curb cuts or any of those other issues. We were only and simply trying to demonstrate using statistical data on the traffic generation of this type of facility, how immeasurable an impact it would have on the surrounding roadways. That's, and when comparing 2015, that has less volume, it would then be more impactful as if you compared it to 2020 or 18, when it would be even less impactful because of the increase of traffic in the general roadways. I'm sorry if I didn't address a specific concern. I just wanted to add that clarity. Thank you.
At the last meeting, you guys had brought up the locations of the Exeter Building and the Wyndham Building. What size square footage building is in Wyndham?
And here we go. This is Michael Kaufman again. In order to answer that question, we probably have to bring on one more member of our team. David Sanderson or Kevin Carrera from Convenient MD are also on. And they can give you a better answer than the people who have an open mic right now.
Thank you.
They are both on self-mute now. I have unmuted them. In answer to your question, Mr. Carrera, I have unmuted you. You're on self-mute.
I'm sorry. Is somebody opening up one of their mics?
The mics have been unmuted. They are both self-muted at this point in time.
Oh, okay. Dave, Kevin?
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
This is Kevin Carrera for the record, speaking for Convenient MD. Both of the Wyndham and Exeter locations are a smaller footprint than what you're seeing here. Those were our two earliest clinics before we had actually expanded our scope of care. So what's provided in those clinics is not the full broad scope of care that we provide today. And that's why those are a smaller square footage.
What would the square footage be?
I do not have the exact square footages in front of me right now, but we could certainly get that for you. But they're roughly in the ballpark of 4,000 square feet.
Thank you.
And just to add clarity again, we have increased our scope of service. So we offer more than we did back in 2012 when we first started.
And that's a two-floor building you're proposing or a single floor?
The one today we are proposing is a primarily single-floor building with some storage space for medical records and other equipment in the double-height space where I guess it's facing the 125 end.
Okay. Anybody else? Any other questions, concerns?
Well, just my concern, Jim Unger speaking, my main concern would be, of course, the setbacks to the streets. You know, in Section 2 of the Spirit and Intent of the Ordinance, you mentioned setbacks separating structures, which of course would be side or rear setbacks. But front setbacks are normally intended to separate from the street and to also give a certain feel of that neighborhood so you don't have buildings right along a streetway like you might have in an urban setting versus a more rural setting like Plastow where things tend to be further back. I mean, myself, I can't think of many other buildings along the entire length of 125 that are as close as this building's going to be to Hazelton Street. Just seems to me like a more urban-looking setting than we're used to.
So this is Ari Pollock. I certainly appreciate the comment. The building will be further back than the existing structure today. And again, the challenge here was to try to deal with a rather unique-shaped lot and try to put what would be a modern facility with its plate on there. You heard from Kevin that the storage area on the second floor is a way to get that footprint as small as possible. And all of the publicly accessed areas are all on one floor.
Yeah, but when you look at the setback on Hazelton Street of the original building, you're talking a corner that is that 11 feet away, and then it slopes away. And not only does it slope away further than your building, but it's half as much length. So the intrusion here is by far greater than the original building.
Anybody else?
No, my main concern is traffic impact, though, quite honestly. That section of Main Street turned into a two-way road considering years when this was done and primarily a one-way. And now with all the other businesses in that area, I think that impact, the line of sight on that corner is going to cause problems. Entrance and exit with two adjacent entrances. I mean, right on Main Street, you have business right across the street. And they have traffic coming and going. And I think you're going to lose, you're going to have traffic issues. The line of sight of that corner being that close to the 14.
Is that still, John, is that still an only right turn there at Main Street at 125?
That's a, no. Yes, it's only right and then only exit onto 125.
So they can't go south on 125 if I'm not mistaken, correct?
You'd have to go to Hazelton.
Right. My concern would be how many people are going to make an illegal left so they don't have to cut through the parking lot and whatnot.
Right.
If you sit at that intersection right now, they're making illegal left-hand turns all day long.
Right. I mean, let me say it's. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And without bringing up what's opening up across the street on the, just over the Havel line, that really has to be looked at in relation to this building also and traffic.
So I guess I would.
Do anything about it with Havel.
I didn't mean to cut somebody off. This is Ari Pollock again. I really just want to bring forward that a lot of the discussion relates to traffic loading, site planning. We're here for setbacks. I know you can tie the setback to site distance concerns, and that's fair. But as far as the traffic volumes are concerned and whether there are existing conditions there that are causing motorists to ignore traffic signals, I expect we'll get into that conversation with the planning board if we can get that far. And I'm sure there'll be a larger discussion about how much of it is attributable to this proposed use versus the existing condition.
And folks, I would very much love to try to focus once again on the amount of traffic.
I'm sorry, who's speaking, please?
My bad. Sorry, Dee. This is Michael Kaufman again. Please try to focus, and when you're thinking about these things, on the amount of traffic this use generates in comparison to what otherwise could theoretically be put on this site. You know, somebody earlier mentioned a 2,000-square-foot building. There's several uses that could fit in a 2,000-square-foot building that would generate 10 times the amount of traffic that this particular use would generate. So in a way, allowing this type of proposal to move forward will ensure that, for example, a coffee shop doesn't get proposed on this site. Or a fast food restaurant doesn't get proposed on this site. Again, we understand the concerns and we fully intend on addressing those concerns with the planning board if we're able to get there. Just please keep in mind the actual volumes that this building will generate in comparison to other uses that are allowed in the commercial district. Thank you.
Thank you. And keeping that in mind, I'm still at the 14-foot variance I had with the line of sight. That's where the issue comes. The traffic just exasperates that, but that, to me, is an issue.
I will say that I think they did a good job modifying the site plan from the last one. I mean, the last plan where they were pushed up front on 125 completely blocked the line of sight. I think they did a good job pulling it back from 125. It's a tough site. They had setbacks on three sides. In our last meeting, we did address the concern of the biggest thing was a sight line to Route 125. I think they did a good job addressing that. But, you know, it's tough to stay out of the setbacks on all three sides, that's for sure.
Someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the issue we're talking right now is not even Hazelton. It's Main Street. And the setback from Main Street, from the corner to building to Main Street, is only 12 and 1/2 feet.
Well, that's, I mean, they were, you know, at the last meeting, they were in compliance on Main.
They went from, they went from.
Right.
They went from 35 and 1/2 feet from Main Street on the last one down to 12 and 1/2 feet this time.
Yeah, well, actually, we gave them 2.3-foot variance on Main on the last one. So, I mean, but.
That's all gone away then.
Well, only because they slid the building back to come into conformity for 125.
Much further from 125.
Much further.
Not to say, look, the zoning issue we're talking about right now is strictly Main Street. We keep bringing up Hazelton Ave. That's the next one.
Okay.
So let's not get the two confused, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
This is Michael Kaufman once again. I'm sorry, folks, I just, the main driver that we heard the last time was the concern about the proximity to the building, to Plastow Road. And the primary focus of concern was the congestion at Hazelton and Plastow. So the best we can do to address that concern is to move the building as far away from Hazelton and Plastow Road as possible, which creates the need for the variances we're seeking.
This is Michael from Allen and Major Associates, speaking to Main Street. The site distance is typically measured about 15 feet off of the pavement edge. So any cars that were sitting to make a turn, either left or right, onto Main Street would have sufficient site distance to look up Main Street, heading into Plastow, also to look towards Havel in that direction. Now, that's not to say that there's, could be conflicts with other cars coming out of driveways, both directly across from our site or the entrance that's just over the line in Havel. That's a different discussion that would be dealt with in a more detailed traffic memo. The site distance is just the ability to be able to see a potential vehicle or an interaction with another vehicle coming out of a driveway. And based on the sighting of the building, although it's 12.3 feet away, there's still sufficient visual for any driver that's sitting at that driveway to look up Main Street and have full view of cars coming down Main Street and any interactions with driveways that may be across the way as well.
Guys, one other thing I want to mention about the setback on Main Street. I always try to look at these things from both sides, from the applicant and just from being a member on the board. I always try to look at these things from both sides, from the applicant and just from being a member on the board. But, you know, let's say they were to be in compliance with all the setbacks. You couldn't even get a vehicle into the site because you need to place the curb cut somewhere in the center of the property line on Main Street. If you do that, the cars would be pulling right into the building. You build anything here, it has to go in that back corner. I mean, if you really look at the way the site lay out, they're kinda stuck with that. I couldn't even recommend a better... I don't know where else you could put the building. You're gonna be in the setbacks no matter what. I think they did a... You know, again, it's a tough site. It's tough. And that's, you know, but I just don't know where else you'd recommend to put the building. On the last meeting, we definitely did say, hey, the main concern is the sight line for people pulling down Hazelton, looking up 125 because of the amount of the tractor-trailer trucks that come down that hill. They, you know, they pulled the building back off that, that front setback. Obviously, they're in the Main Street one now, but I just don't know what else to do.
I can appreciate that they moved this. I wasn't here on the previous... But my job as a board member is to do what's proper for Plastow, not for their building, not for their businesses, but what's proper for mingling Plastow with business. So if this is gonna encroach and become a cumbersome situation, that's not in the best interest of Plastow. And that, quite honestly, is where my position on this board is, is to do what's proper for the town, Plastow residents. So my concern is not unethical, but just, you know, basically, if we're cutting into line of sight, cutting into growth potentials future for other things in that area, I just wanna make sure we're doing the proper thing.
100%. Anybody else?
Hello, this is Kevin Carrigan. If I could just clarify, I've been able to get those Wyndham and Exeter square footages for you. Both of those were actually part of multi-tenant retail spaces, so there are... We have some shared space as well. So Exeter is actually a 6,000-square-foot facility, and Wyndham comes in right around 5,000 square feet.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. Any other questions? Does the applicant wanna make any more statements? Anything else you folks wanna bring up?
We, this is Ari Pollock. We would only reserve the right to comment after the public has the opportunity to present.
Absolutely. With that said, is anybody speaking in opposition of this application? Dee?
I do have a letter that was, an email that was supplied to the zoning board this morning. It's, "Good morning, board members. I hope you will take the time to read the petition below before your meeting this evening. I've also pasted the link that was earlier for a copy of the attachments. I posted this on Monday simply on the Plasto page, and in two days, it was over 200 signatures. I didn't go door-to-door. Work didn't allow me to send out constant reminders, posts, or even contact my friends, relatives, or neighbors. Yet in two days, with minimal effort, over 200 people and counting signed. This is because our citizens do not want to see the Second North Parish Meeting House, which was built in 1837, razed. I have never done anything like this before. I know little about petitions. I know little about the process or responsibility of the zoning board. I know little of how this issue got in front of you or how, over the years, our small town, lot by lot, building by building, is being bulldozed to become a commercial town where many businesses are here simply to take advantage of tax breaks or lack of taxes and lure Massachusetts residents. It is the theme of so many movies where a giant corporation with no ties to a small town comes in with no regard for history, aesthetics, or the people who live there, and pave paradise to put up a parking lot. The name Mammoth Acquisition says it all. We ask that you think about the citizens of this town and what we want. This building is the gateway to Plasto and New Hampshire. We already have an urgent care facility one mile down the road. The traffic at this intersection was a nightmare before Haverhill built the new Plaza and inserting yet another traffic light. It will be much worse if less frontage is approved. Sightlines are diminished, and more traffic is drawn as people move in and out of the proposed new urgent care facility. We cannot control what Haverhill and Massachusetts did, clearly without regard for us, but we certainly can control the Plasto side of the border. Thank you for your time. Growth and forward-thinking is good, but preserving our past is also important. We have simply lost that balance in Plasto." This was submitted by a gentleman by the name of Mo Morrell. And the petition reads, "We, the undersigned, concerns residents of Plasto. Respectfully oppose the plans by the owner of the property at Two Main Street, A.C. Plasto LLC, and their representative Mammoth Acquisitions Company LLC for the application of three zoning variances. Further, we strongly oppose any plan that results in the tearing down and removal of the historical building at Two Main Street. We oppose the three variances based on the following three ZBAA criteria. These three variances are contrary to the public interest of the citizens in Plasto in that they lead to the destruction or removal of a significant historical landmark in Plasto, namely the Second Plasto Meeting House, built in 1837, which is the gateway to our town. It is here that our ancestors and town fathers met for public meeting and church services for over 100 years. Subsequent owners have maintained the historic aspects of the building up to the present. We believe this building is a key historic landmark, and the majority of town people, if called to a vote, would strongly oppose these variances. Further, these variances would violate the zoning ordinances we voted for regarding adequate, safe setbacks and sightlines from Main Street and Hazelton, and a largely unsightly sign in our gateway that exceeds zoning limits. Number two, these three zoning variances violate the spirit and intent of the ordinance for the same reason. We voted for these ordinances and do not want our intent, in this case, to be misinterpreted or overruled. Number three, we do believe that there is substantial justice in granting these variances, these three variances, and that the justice for the wider public outrays the justice for the applicant in this case. The injustice of creating unsafe sightlines and the unsightly illegal signs should be prominent. The resulting demolition and removal of the historical landmark building would certainly not be justice to us as citizens. Further, we implore the ZBA, the owner, and the applicant to strongly consider the public good and find a use for the property that retains the historical landmark and gateway to Plasto. We ask that the owner meet with concerned citizens and representative in our historical society, planning office, and state preservation experts as soon as possible. There is a number of signatures. I did not count them all. The email does report them to be over 200."
Thank you, Dee. With that said...
Let me look, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, go ahead. You finish.
No, I was gonna look for more hands, but you should, if you're gonna comment on the email, you should.
Well, like I was gonna say, with that being said, we're not here as a board to discuss the building. Take the building out of the equation. That could be an empty lot. Plastow has nothing in set for a historical building. That would be something that the town people or the petition signers could propose to the planning board. But at this juncture, I mean, you can sympathize. I, what, there's nothing, we're not here to discuss the building. It's a moot point. We're here strictly for the setbacks and the variances on the lot. Anybody else?
Well, that said, they're comparing their setbacks to the old setbacks. Because if this was a blank slate, I don't think we'd be considering these setbacks.
Right, but that, moving forward, I agree with you. But that's what I'm saying. I think we should just, you know, take the building out of the equation, and we'll deal with the setbacks of today. Anybody else?
I totally agree. We take the historic aspect out of the original building that they plan on removing. Anybody would probably plan on removing if they were gonna be trying to utilize this site and break for the setbacks. And again, I have a problem with 12 and 1/2 feet out of 50 feet. You guys moved it. I wasn't here for the prior meeting, so I apologize. I probably would've had a stronger stance on that prior to, but I can't justify the 12 feet.
Okay, well, like I say, why don't we... Dee, is there anybody else with raised hands as far as against, for?
I'm gonna open up the question box because I think these question marks are old. Yes, they are. So I see no new raised hands for in opposition of the project. Did you also call for in... Oh, wait a minute, I have one here. Oh, I have a raised hand. I have a... Oh, it's turned off now. Mr. Foynes, are you looking to make a question? Okay, I see a raised hand, so I'm going to unmute his mic. The name is Mark Foynes. Mr. Foynes, you are unmuted. Could you please state your address for the record?
Mark Foynes at Bo White and ES 783 Old County Road. And I am calling in opposition to this as a historian of the town of Plasto. I am the author of the book, Plasto, Westville, and the North Parish. The building under consideration in this proposal featured prominently in that publication. As the petition noted, this building is of considerable historical value to the town, and I do believe also statewide. One thing that kind of caught my attention was that the applicant, someone speaking in behalf of the applicant, noted that no other use could be obtained for this building, given its footprint, and that's just flat out not true because it was in continuous use, in near-continuous use, for nearly 180 years, beginning in 1837. So that, to me, just strikes me as something that's worthy of continued discussion with the applicants. And I think that the advocate for the applicants would be open to this. Actually, Ari and I have moved in similar circles. And I know that Gallagher, Callahan, and Gartrell is located in a historic building and would probably be, probably be open to some more preservation-minded options that may present themselves. But, you know, ultimately, we've seen this in Plasto. We've seen this movie before. We had one building on the historic, the National Historic Register. That was the old trolley car house on Elm Street, gone. You know, you look at, I remember cruising down 125 with my dad as a little kid, and it was still all open field. I'm only, I'm not even 50 years old. You look at it now, well, you know, kind of it is what it is. But at the same time, there are, there are inflection points, and decision-makers need to decide. And, you know, you guys are gonna be the ones who, if that building comes to town, you know, there's gonna be old timers like me saying, yeah, there was five guys. They had a chance to, you know, do something, to save something that was truly, you know, part of our shared heritage, and it's gone. Gone, you know, it's a picture of it in the book. But, you know, the gateway to Plasto and New Hampshire, to the Great Grand State, people coming north are just gonna see yet another building. So I place that before you. I do believe that you are the public servants. Take your stewardship of the town seriously. And I ask that you consider, and frankly, I took some umbrage with the notion that we should just take the building out of the equation altogether. And that's the 100-pound gorilla, at least as far as I'm concerned. I'm not even going to get into the fact that another walking clinic is a redemnancy. That's a business decision that the applicant needs to make. But I just ask that those of you who are charged with pondering this, deliberating it, give all due consideration to what's at stake, especially now. And the applicant made reference to, you know, we're living in a COVID world. Well, we're also living in a world where monuments are coming down. Things that remind us of our shared heritage are coming down. People are up in arms about that. And you have an opportunity here to say, you know, that stood the testament of time. It's been in continuous use for 179 years. It's part of who we are as the residents of Plasto. Is it a testament, or is it something that's ephemeral? Thank you.
Thank you. In response, I appreciate...
If I may, I would like to respond to that.
Sure, Gary, go ahead.
There's two issues here, sir. When he said disregard the building, as members of the ZBA, we need to disregard the building because we are here to enforce the law, not whether we like the building or not. On the flip side of that, Plasto, over the years, has never enacted a historic district. And as not having a historic district, these buildings that are being torn down are not protected. So it's a two-handed issue, neither one of which we handle as a ZBA. It's, that might be more under the planning board than the historical society's purview. But you do make a very good, good argument to this building. Unfortunately, you're making them to the wrong people.
Couldn't have said it better, Gary.
I have another hand raised. The name is Lynn Jeffries. Ms. Jeffries, you may go ahead. Please state your name and address for the record.
Lynn Jeffries, 12 Ridgewood Road in Plasto. I am going to address right off of your five reasons for variance. And the first thing I wanna mention is that it is his responsibility, not people who are against it, is his responsibility to show, to prove each of your five points for variance. And the proposed variance will not be contrary to public interest. The 12 feet is clearly against our 50-foot minimum, and, you know, preserving that building is against the interest. I don't know how you can not take the fact that we are talking about a historic building into effect when looking at the public interest on this 12-foot or 14-foot for the next one. I understand that your job is not about historic buildings or preserving buildings, but I would just say that, you know, this variance is contrary to public interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody wanna respond?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, if we are going to be sticking to the letter of the law, I mean, the very fact that a variance is being requested, I mean, I'm sure that you are very diligent in making sure that you are looking at the, you know, the exactness of it all. But frankly, you're, in just the very act of providing a variance, variance is a nice way of saying, doing something that's not consistent with the law. And this is the law that met with the approval of the voters and taxpayers in this town. So I just wanted to clarify that. So with that, if there are any, anyone, I'll stand down. Thank you again for your time.
Any other?
I don't see any additional hands raised, but I don't know if the applicant has any rebuttal they would like to present.
This is Ari Pollock. We certainly appreciate the board's response on the historic aspects of the building and agree with that analysis. There is no historic district or protections offered in town. And frankly, if that were the case, the applicant would not have proposed the demolition of the existing building. We'd have known it was not allowed. And as far as the comment made about the purpose behind setbacks, it is true that in a perfect equation and in lots that have the flexibility to comply fully, you wouldn't ask for a variance or wouldn't be justified in asking. But in special circumstances, they are permitted, and that's the reason the board and the variance concept exists. And as was mentioned by one of the board members, you simply can't get at least a reasonable medical office use out of this lot, which is otherwise permitted unless you're in the setback on one place or another. And listening to the conversation from the last application, we certainly respected the priorities that were conveyed and moved the building, but of course, pressing on one side pushed on another. And so we've done our best to respect the priorities, but can't solve the overall problem without relief from this board. Thank you.
Dee, any other hands in, you know, either for against or for?
Let me check one more time. Sorry, I'm working without a mouse, and I'm not used to it, my apologies. But I don't see any additional hands raised.
With that, guys, you have anything else before we close?
I'll just try to add one last thing. This is Michael Kaufman. I understand the concern of the board as it relates to the number on the setbacks and the, how much of a variance we are seeking in specific to this case on Main Street. But again, I think by hiring the traffic engineer, one of the primary focuses was to analyze whether this property could function safely, whether the sightlines met the industry standards, whether the traffic could flow adequately. And the memo clearly states that it does, and we do. And I hope when this board is considering the request that they take into consideration that this site can function very well, very safe, with adequate sightlines and a truly de minimis amount of new traffic on the roadway. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just would ask that you would read the statement about deliberate, the deliberative process before you close that hearing, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Once the public hearing is closed, there can be no additional input from either the applicant or the abutters. Applicants are welcome to listen to the board's deliberations, but all microphones will be muted as no additional comment is allowed. Listeners may note that all applications are made in a format to grant, but consistent clarity, it is not indicative of how a member making a motion may vote. A notice of decision will be mailed out within five business days. No action will be taken on the decision of the board for 30 days, which is the appeal period under the state's RSAs.
Thank you, sir.
With that, you're welcome. And with that, we're going to close this hearing. So you guys want to step through the five variance criterias?
I'm sorry, sir, could I ask for a motion first before you begin discussion?
I apologize. Yep, I apologize. Can I have a motion to?
Could I ask you, the draft motion is in your staff report? We just want to get it legally right.
I move to grant the application for the variance from Article B, to allow a structure to be built within 12.3 feet of the front property line along Main Street of the property located at 2 Main Street, tax map 24 lot 43.
I'm just going to clarify that that is Article 5, and it's Section 22032 IA.
IA, I apologize.
Yeah, the articles are always Roman numerals, so my apologies.
Give me a second.
Seconding. Seconding the motion.
Thank you.
All right, we'll step through the five criterias. Number one being the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Well, as we, as we see.
I would want somebody to define public interest because we have a lot, a lot of public right now that aren't too happy with this.
Right.
I don't know if the way they aren't happy with it is within our jurisdiction.
I would say, no, it's not. I mean, theoretically, they could have bought that property and already tore it down and sold it as a parking lot. So, I mean, we're here to discuss the variances.
Right.
Not the building. And, you know, like Gary said, there's no, that building has no protection.
That's true, Dan. They could apply for a demo permit tomorrow, right? It brings to light, I mean, the people of Plasto feel that they want to protect not only historic things, but also Main Street. Plasto has a beautiful Main Street. I mean, I'm of the opinion they probably should do some kind of Main Street overlay or something that, you know, adds to architectural design and things like that. They should. It's got a lot of opportunity, but we don't really have that jurisdiction.
However, developers will leave. I don't think anyone would knock that building down without having a permit to build because that's a usable building that's there. But oftentimes, they do leave the original structure in place so they can say, look, our new building is no worse.
Right.
Because if this was a blank slate, I don't think anyone would come in asking for literally 20% of the setback of what's allowed.
I'm just reading through here. Demonstrated public benefit if the variance were to be granted, but merely by show that there will be no harm, i.e. will not be contrary to the public interest of granted. So again, we're talking, let's talk. I'm just going to say, let's talk.
We keep talking over one another. I think it will be contrary to the public interest because of the setbacks. Again, take the building out of the equation. They want to build right basically on the streets. The setbacks themselves are not in the public interest.
Right. John, anything?
Oh, I, my whole issue is the 12.3. I believe it's too close. Now, they've moved it, and they've adjusted it. Maybe if they can go back and live in a smaller footprint, or I just, I can't wholeheartedly feel comfortable granting 12.3 feet on that edge of property with everything that's going on in that area. Everything that's going to be growth on the other side has more potential as well. We haven't, no, I mean, there's a house right there that I believe is on the market, and that's C1 area, too. So, and that encompasses that whole other section where Hazelton and Main, because we are talking about Main right now, where that needs as well. So that's going to add an additional burden. I believe that 12.3 is just too limited of a resource. I think if we were, if we were in the 30, you know, maybe 35, I can't, I can't justify knocking 40 feet off of a variance, off of a, you know, projected. That's just, I understand, they want to fit their particular thing, but I don't work for them, to be honest. I work for the town, and, or I represent what's hopefully in the best interest of the town. And I don't believe 12.3, right there, is in the best interest of the growth and potential of that building lot. It's just, hey, you know what? It was built when it was, you know, there were horse and carriages going around that area. None of this was ever, you know, ever going to be an issue when, when the original footprint was designed. Sorry, it's just not, it's not the right building for that, that lot, in my, in my eyes. And it is that 12.3 that gives me that profit.
And they also stoked early on about keeping a vegetation buffer around the building. So they put shrubs or bushes out there in that 12.3. They grow up, then you can't see cars coming. Again, there's not enough space in that 12, 12-foot-three space.
I think both you guys, it's almost like there's just not enough, it's a tough lot. You just can't build that much there.
You could put a 300-foot building on that lot and not have the adjusted amount of parking that they need and everything else. I just don't think this, this is the right building for that lot. Unless they can find a better way where you can, you can give us more on this side, and again, more on the Hazelton side as well, because that's going to be an issue that's going to come up in the next.
Right.
So I'm against, you can read through the other ones, the value of the surrounding property. Well, let's go ahead and read through.
Yeah, why don't we do the spirit of the ordinance is observed. And again, we just talked about it. We're talking about the question of frontage requirements.
Right.
So, I mean, that, that one there basically tells you right there, you know, as far as the ordinance is what that's supposed to entail. I mean, basically, you're eliminating the frontages for the most part.
Yep.
Substantial justice is done. Perhaps, well, perhaps the only guiding rule is that any loss to the individual that is not outweighed by a gain to the general public is an injustice. Well, I, I think the public is, will gain a lot more as far as to let, you know, by not only because of the increase in traffic and congestion.
Quite honestly, if there wasn't another one just recently built within two miles of this one, I could see what this would have a justice granting it because then we would have a minute clinic in the area. But we already have a minute clinic in the area, so, or an urgent, whatever the norma quitie you want to use. So we're not, we're not gaining anything by putting this on this postage stamp, in my eyes. Again, it's my opinion.
Anybody else on this one?
Now, are we talking substantial justice is done to the actual current property owner? Because we're letting him sell his lot? Because he already has a 4,500-square-foot office building that he could rent?
Right.
I think the substantial justice is to the public.
Right. And that's the thing, any loss to the individual, which is not outweighed by a gain to the general public, would be the injustice. So I, like I say, I think the public has more to gain here. That's, and again, that's my opinion.
Sorry, gain by leaving it there, the building as it is.
Right, and, you know, yeah.
You're not voting to leave that building as it is.
No, no, just saying.
Get this quick. That building, anything can happen. What we're looking on is.
I'm talking about the traffic and the traffic setbacks. Number four, the values of the surrounding properties are not diminished. I don't think so. That's a commercial area. You've got businesses all over the place. I think this one is the only one that may go, and you know what I mean, that I can agree with. I don't think, I personally don't think the business will be diminished over there.
Oh, I don't believe that it's going to have a negative factor on any of the other businesses that are from Abel. They're too far away. Futuristically, that the house that's across the street, both on Hazelton is up for sale, and the house across the street that is, I believe, also for sale and is in the C1, it has direct impact on our traffic and everything else in that area.
Number five, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. Jim, like you said, you know, there's, there's other avenues they could use that property for.
Right, and plus, the word literal means we, we require 50 feet. There's a difference between 50 feet and 11.
Right.
John said, if we were talking 30, 35 feet, it might be much more reasonable. But literal enforcement, we're not, we're not necessarily asking for literal enforcement. We're just asking for some, we would prefer to see something far more reasonable.
Exactly.
We're not even close to literal enforcement.
Right.
So, I mean, read through them. I mean, any other discussion on these? You good, Gary?
I'm good.
Ethan?
Yes, sir.
Jim?
Yeah.
Ron?
I'm ready to vote.
All right, Dee, let's, let's take a vote.
Jonathan Gifford?
Nanny?
Gary Ingham?
No.
Ethan Connolly?
No.
Jim Unger?
No.
Dan Lloyd?
No.
Your vote is 050, and the motion is defeated. The motion to grant, the motion to grant is defeated. I'm sorry. I want to make sure it's clear.
Dee, would you like to read the next case, please?
Sure. Case number 20-22. A request from Mammoth Acquisition Company LLC for a variance from Article 5, Section 22032 IA to permit a structure to be placed within 14.3 feet of the property line on Hazelton Street, where 50 feet is the minimum. The property is located at 2 Main Street, tax map 24 lot 43 in the C1 district. The property owner of record is AC Plasto LLC, Dick Anagnost manager. Give me just a second to unmute those folks again. It looks like Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Malinowski have self-muted. And I have unmuted Mr. Pollak.
Yes, good evening. This is Ari Pollak again for the applicant. Unfortunately, without having received variance relief on the prior setback request, receiving relief on the Hazelton Street side of the site does not support the concept that we're pursuing. So I think it would be a time saver for all of us to withdraw both this setback request and the third request, which relates to wall signage. Having, having some but not all doesn't support the concept, and don't want to take your time.
Is your request for that withdrawal to be without prejudice, sir?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the board amenable to the withdrawal? Is the board amenable to the withdrawal of the last two applications, of those two applications?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak.
Good night.
Hey, give me just a second to work my mute button magic.
Okay.
And then we will move on to the last one, or the last two, I'm sorry. Okay. The last two are pretty interrelated. Would you like me to read them together, or do you want to do them, have them separate?
Together would be fine.
Okay. Case number 20-24, a request from Denise Laritanda, refreshing pause for a variance from Article 5, Table 22032 GB2, to allow a care and treatment of animals use, namely a retail dog. to allow a care and treatment of animals use, namely a retail dog grooming business, a non-permitted use. The property is located at 134 Newton Road, Tax Map 70, Lot 20, in the ICR District. The property owner of record is Northland Mall LLC. Case number 20 dash 25, a request from Denise Laritanda, Refreshing Paws, for a variance from Article 5, Table 220, 32 BD10, to allow a care and treatment of animals use, namely a retail dog grooming business in a strip mall which is not permitted. The property is located at 134 Newton Road, Tax Map 70, Lot 20, in the ICR District. The property owner of record is Northland Mall LLC. I do have a letter from Northland Mall LLC that authorizes, um, Kevin Hatch of Cornerstone and Denise Laritanda to make the application. I'm going to unmute both of them right now. Hey, they are both unmuted.
Good evening. Uh, why don't you tell us what you'd like to do over there?
Sure, uh, for the record, this is Kevin Hatch. I'm a licensed land surveyor and owner of Cornerstone Survey Associates up here in Chester. Uh, I'm here tonight, uh, representing both Northland Mall and, uh, a refreshing pause. I believe Denise, uh, Laritando is also on the call on a separate line. Um, the application you have in front of you tonight is, is simply boiled down to permission to put a, a dog grooming facility in the Northland Mall. And in order to do that, um, Mike Dorman has directed the applicant to, um, to apply for a variance from Article 5, Section 220, 32G, which is basically the use table in the ICR zone. In the ICR zone, dog grooming or care and treatment of animals is not listed as an allowed use. Uh, so the assumption is it's not an allowed use. Um, we have, we have a, uh, uh, existing strip mall, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. In that mall now, there is a, a dog training facility. That dog training facility was granted a special exception in 2015 for the care and treatment of animals. So this is not the first time this board has seen an application for a dog facility in this location. In fact, uh, there have been two other dog groomers in this building prior to, uh, prior to that time. Um, I know they've moved out a few years back and it has been vacant, so it's not a grandfathered use, but, uh, it is a, a similar use to historic use. The proposal is simply to take one of the units. I don't know whether this will allow me to screen share. It appears it's still sharing.
Hold on, I have the screen share, hold on.
That's okay.
Sorry.
The, the, uh, the board members have my site plan in.
Yeah, but I'd like to put it up so the other attendees can see it as well.
Okay, let me see if I can get it to do this.
No, I can do it, Kevin, from here.
Okay, okay.
As soon as I figure it out, hold on one second.
Well, that's okay, because my screen just went big enough, so I can't see my screen anyways.
You know, when I don't want to do it, I can do it six times. Oh, I think I figured it out, hold on. Hold on one second.
Sure. Now, I can keep going with the, the idea here anyways.
Yes.
The, um, the proposed use, the, uh, dog grooming facility is actually an existing business. The business has been in place for 31 years, just over the line in Merrimack, Mass. The owner, uh, Denise, would like to, um, move the business to this location. She has a couple of full-time employee dog groomers right now, so essentially it's, it's a small dog grooming operation. She'll be, she'll be there and a couple of full-time employees. The way, the way it operates is, uh, folks drop their dog off for a short period of time. The dogs are not outdoors at all. It simply goes to, um, the indoor facility to be groomed, kept there for just a short while until the, the owners come back to pick them up. Uh, so this isn't, uh, something that you're going to see outside. It's not similar to a kennel or even the dog training facility that's there. Uh, this is contained and at least quiet for the neighbors. The, the way the, uh, the way the building inspector has, has, uh, requested that we apply for this, uh, it is a variance for that use in that zone. But because there is, um, a uh, special exception for this in other zones in town, we've kind of used the, the criteria of the special exception to explain how this operates and how it fits into the, the, uh, the scope of what would be permissible, at least in another zone. I'd be happy to go through those items if you'd like. Kind of just need, need to know what you'd like to hear about, um, in which direction we should go with this.
You can go through your criteria.
Okay. You have your application for appeal, which has the five criteria. Um, I don't know whether you want those read into the record.
Yes, please.
Yes, okay. I'll start with that. Those, these are the application for appeal, Article 5, Section 220, hyphen, 32 GB2. This is a variance of the zoning ordinance to permit a retail dog grooming business in the existing Northland Mall. Number one, the proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest, because it will allow a low-impact use in the existing unit, where a dog groomer business has been in the past and in the same mall that in an, an existing dog care facility presently exists. The use will be located entirely indoors and will not have a negative effect on abutting properties. Number two, the spirit and intent of the ordinance is preserved, because the intent of the ordinance is to limit conflicting uses within the zone. The mall has had dog groomer, groomer services in the past and currently has dog training facility. The proposed use does not conflict with the surrounding uses and meets the spirit and intent of the ordinance. Number three, there is substantial justice in granting the variance, because granting the variance allows the property owner a reasonable use of her land without any negative effect on surrounding properties. It will allow the business owner a practical location for her existing business without impacting a residential area with additional traffic. This facility is well-suited for a commercial business like this. Number four, the variance of the surround, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished, because the dogs will be kept indoors for short periods of time. No outdoor use of the property is proposed. The property is surrounded by a landscape buffer and/or fence, and the dogs will be dropped off from the main parking lot. Number five, the literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, because the dog groomer, dog grooming is not listed under allowed use, but meets the definition of a retail business, which is an allowed use in the commercial plaza. To not grant this variance would be denying the property owner a reasonable use of the property. The proposed use is limited to, to full, to full-time employees, plus the owner with limited number of dogs on site at any time. The, the special exception, which is technically not part of this application, but does have an 11 criteria outline for a, um, care and treatment of animals is listed a couple pages before this. It's listed under Article 5, Section 220, 32B. And those 11 criteria I have also given you in your packet. Basically, the bottom line is, this, these, each of these 11 items are items that won't be affecting the neighbors. Um, outdoors, large animals, um, overnight dogs, or, you know, the inability of the staff to maintain control of, of what's going on. So if you'd like those read into the record, that's fine too. Otherwise, you can just skim through those.
Did you guys get a chance to go through those?
Yeah, I don't think you need to.
Okay. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You can see on the, on the display in front of you, the, the unit location that they're talking about. I'm sure you're all familiar with, uh, the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza and the Northland, uh, convenience store and, and gas station there. Basically tucked in there, she'll be able to take a few dogs in at a time, groom them and send them on their way. I believe you also have in your packet a, a recommendation from Merrimack, where she's presently operating. Uh, just stating that this is a legitimate business and a good member of the community. Certainly a good, a good reference.
You guys have any questions?
Not really, seems pretty straightforward.
Anybody else?
I, I don't have a question per se, but it does seem pretty straightforward with what I consider the exception being, I, I, I would imagine most all of us here have animals, dogs, whatnot. We are dog people. So I have nothing against this business, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna read this. At the 2018 town meeting, an amendment to the zoning ordinances as related to the care and treatment of animals was passed. The amendment removed the use from the integrated commercial residential district. The use is restricted to commercial one district by special exemption and the industrial district by right. The town also voted to change some of the criteria for care and treatment of animals. One such change was to restrict the use to a standalone business and prohibited it from strip malls. Now, that's what they're, exactly what they're asking for. And two years ago, the people of this town said, no, we're not going to do this anymore.
And that was actually, that was March of 2018, to be exact.
Yeah, so that kind of, I don't know. You know, I'm really up in the air over this, because this isn't like it's a 20-year-old zoning issue for us to discuss. The townspeople voted this in two years ago.
That's a good point, Gary. Well, with that, um, before, that's big, what we'll do is we'll save that for the deliberations. Why don't we, uh, do we have any more questions for the, for this gentleman? Or for the applicant?
I, I would like to just, just address that for a second. Um, we understand that there were changes to that ordinance. Um, and I can certainly understand in an ICR zone, that's integrated, commercial and residential, where, where you're going to start to have conflicts between adjacent uses. Probably, uh, a good portion of what you, you as a board deal with is, is trying to get neighbors to, to get along well with each other. Certainly, I think this use where it's completely enclosed is a little different than if we had doggy daycare out here and, and, again, I have a dog, I, I enjoy them, I love them. But my, my folks, my parents live not too far from an outdoor kennel that, that probably doesn't mesh as well with its neighbors as, as one would like. Uh, I don't see that as a conflict in this situation, where the dogs are indoors, being groomed and sent on their way. So I can certainly see where certain uses, uh, would be a conflict of interest, especially in an integrated zone. I don't think that is a particular case here.
Is the applicant going to take any steps to, I mean, the only thing I can think of why someone wouldn't want this use there is just naturally, you know, dogs bark, dogs make noise. Do you know if the applicant's going to take any steps to, uh, soundproof, you know, soundproof or prohibit some of the noise from passing through the wall to the neighbor?
I, I know that the owner of the mall actually runs their office, just not one door down. So any noise would be, uh, certainly monitored by, by the owner who's, whose income, uh, is dependent on having all of these uses in the plaza work well together. How they, how they achieve that soundproofing, I'm not familiar with it, but, uh, I know that it's, it's policed on site with the owner being actually in the, in the unit two doors down.
I mean, I, I can't think of a better use and to add to the ICR zone, I kind of feel like it's, you know, with the exception of maybe a daycare or something like that, but then I see what Gary just pointed out, that the people of Plastup specifically removed this use from the ICR zone. So there, there goes my thought out the window. But the only thing I can think of is, is just noise and it's.
Yeah. Well, with the existing dog training facility and, you know, you think of the traffic coming through Dunkin's and, and the gas station there. The small, the, the smaller use, uh, here will probably not even be noticed compared to the others.
Yep. Well, that dog training, that was grandfathered. He was there before the vote.
Correct, that was a, that was a, I can't say grandfathered, because I believe it was actually a special exception to allow it.
But, but that was prior to the vote.
Yeah, but prior, prior to the change in the, in the requirement in 2018. Before that, it was allowed by a special exception.
Right.
Yep.
Dan or Dee, we haven't had any, um, any letters or any opposition from either of the neighbors, have we?
No, I.
The thrift store, the antique shop?
No, there, um, only the property owners notified. It was their responsibility to notify their tenants, so I don't know.
I'm, I'm going to jump in, and I know that the thrift store is actually owned by the landowner applicant, so I'm sure they're not in opposition, because they're petitioning for it.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I forgot to unmute. Um, what I was, was going to say, it would be the property owner's responsibility to notify the tenants. We would not have notified the individual tenants. Um, so as far as whether or not they have an opinion, that might have been dependent upon the notification they received about it, but that's not a requirement for this board. And I do have the letter that I forwarded in your packet from the town clerk in the town of Merrimack. Um, when you call for those speaking in favor, I'd be happy to read that into the record.
I, yeah, we can do that now.
Okay.
Yes, we can read that, Dee.
Okay. This is from the town clerk in the offices of, uh, Merrimack, Mass. This letter is to confirm that Denise Laritanda has been the owner of pet grooming business in the town of Merrimack, Massachusetts, called A Refreshing Paws. A Refreshing Paws has been a registered business in Merrimack since 1989. Denise is known to me as she has hosted numerous rabies clinics. She's invited me at Town Clerk, I'm assuming that means as, in order to register the, as many dogs have been brought to the event to be vaccinated. By hosting clinics, Denise has provided a vital service in keeping the pets and the public healthy in our community. I have also taken all my pets to a refreshing pause and have always been pleased with the care and services provided. I am sure Denise will be an asset to any community she chooses to work with. Signed by Gwendolyn Sabah, Town Clerk of Merrimack.
Thank you. You guys have anything else for, um, for this gentleman?
I do know that Denise, Denise has been muted, I believe, but I, I know she has gone around. She's spoken with the, the abutting tenants, about what she was doing there. I don't know whether she has any additional input there that might help you.
Actually, she is self muted. I did unmute her.
Okay.
Does she want to add anything?
Denise, did you want to unmute and speak with the board? Oh, now she's away. She's away from her keyboard.
All right, um, well, with that being the case, um, why don't we, um, we've done the, uh, yay and nay, so why don't we close the public? why don't we close the public hearing?
Are you closing both public hearings?
Yeah, I'm gonna close them. Yeah, 20 dash, yep.
Can we just make sure that Kevin has has addressed both public hearings in the way he wants to?
Sure.
Yeah, I I don't know if you need it, but I did. I read into the minutes, the application for the first variance, which is a variance from the ICR zones allowed uses. The second one that we've been asked to apply for, basically the same thing, but because Article 5, Section 220 hyphen 32B, the 10, is that special exception criteria that specifically talks to the the strip mall portion of that. You have a second application in front of you. The the items, the five criteria are very similar, but if you'd like them read into the record, I'd be happy to do that.
No, I think I'm all set. You guys have an issue?
No.
Oh. Okay. So with that, we're gonna close the close the meeting. And can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Do you you want for first hand?
Yeah, for 20 dash 24, Ethan, the first.
Motion to approve.
And have a second.
I'm sorry, he needs to read the draft motion the way it's listed.
The draft motion as reported, 20 dash 24, a request from Denise Laritanda.
I'm sorry, just just the motion part, the part that's in dark italics, I'm sorry.
20 dash 24.
Yep, we'll start with I move.
Oh, I move to grant the variance request from Article 5, 2020 dash 32 GB 2, to allow a care and treatment of animals use at the property located at 134 Newton Road. Tax map 70, lot 20.
Second?
Second.
That was Gary, Dee.
Okay. I just want to note real quick because Denise Laritanda has her hand raised. The public hearing has already been closed, so unfortunately, Ms. Laritanda, we cannot open it back up for you for mic comment.
And do we need to read read the the second one?
No, I need to vote on this one first, go through this one first.
Okay, all right. We'll read through the criteria.
Sure. Do you want me to or do you wanna do it then?
Yeah, Ethan, if you got it, go ahead.
All right. The proposed variance will not be contrary to the public interest because it will allow a low-impact use.
No, this is where you want the board to come up with their own findings, not just repeat what the applicant provided.
Sure, yeah. All right, so. I mean, I, you guys wanna talk about this?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's, I mean, like Gary said, we just had that vote.
Yeah, the stickler part is that vote. I would love to know what the circumstances were, but we don't know that.
No. So that's that's my issue. I mean, how do you, it's kind of a sticking point, but.
I'm just racking my brain on why anyone wouldn't want that use in the the integrated commercial. Again, it just seems like a perfect fit for that that zone, but it's gotta be noise, right? And that's all I can.
Even that, or I.
Yeah. They're lumping it all under the care of of animals.
Right.
And if you, you know, if you have a doggy daycare in one of these facilities, it does get loud. I mean, I know for a fact, I I all too frequently go to Louis's Pizza right next door to the doggy daycare and you can hear the dogs barking when you pull up and get out of your car. But at the same token, I've been into many dog groomers in my work and it's not the same. It's a whole different ballgame.
Right.
Without interacting.
I mean.
Without really knowing the the basis of the vote two years ago, I mean, it could be anything. It could be noise, it could be having food establishments in the same building. It could be somebody hates dogs, I I really don't know.
Yeah.
But it's a new, you know, it wasn't that long ago. That's to me is an issue.
Yep. I mean, it's, well, let's continue, we'll go through almost.
The, are we ready for number two? The spirit and and of the ordinance is preserved because.
Hate to come back to the same thing, but it wouldn't be preserved. They just voted to change it.
Okay. There's substantial justice in granting the variance because.
This is another tricky one because there is substantial justice in granting the variance. But we don't know if it outweighs the loss to the public.
Right.
Because of the way the public voted.
Right.
All right. Striking out here, the values of the surrounding properties will not be diminished because.
No, I don't, yeah, I don't see that being an issue.
No, it's not.
I mean, again, it's just a noise thing and your neighbor is, you know, there's a law firm next door and there's a bunch of barking dogs. But I don't really see that as a situation here.
Dee, do you have the, what was voted into the town for the zoning ordinance in 2018? Do you have that verbiage? I apologize, my due diligence slept on this one and I didn't.
I I tried to summarize it for you in the in the staff report, but basically, the reason that they need the variance is because it took the use out of the ICR district. It was very generic because they're not allowed to electioneer by putting more things, but there might have been more input in the voters' notes. But it basically removed it from the ICR and changed some of the criteria for the special exception to include not having it as a.
You know that it was solely wrapped around the animal care aspect or were there other factors involved that would have created that vote?
That would have happened at the planning board discussion. I'm sorry, I can't help you much with that.
And I and I appreciate it. Again, I didn't do my due diligence on that.
And I mean, if somebody was really against this or it affected their property, I mean, they could always speak up or appeal our decision, right?
It's true.
All right, I'll read the fifth. The literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship because. Oh, yeah, I mean.
And again, this is, this is. It would be for the applicant and I presume the strip mall as far as being rent the space, but.
There's already two dog training facilities on the, or two units occupied by a dog training facility and I just, I would, again, I would like to know more about why they they removed it from the zone.
It almost seems like the zoning definition is a little too broad because doggy daycare, dog training and dog grooming are three very different things if you're ever in one of those shops.
Probably of that, you know.
But they all get lumped under this one category for us.
Right, yeah.
Well, that's why we're a judicial branch. I see that it's a two-bay dog training station. I know it's previously a dog grooming station within this this allotted area. And quite honestly, I see the part of the the 18th, the vote that that limits this. But I can't see where it would just be eliminated in this particular circumstance. Only because it's existing. Obviously, it was prior to the vote that the the doggy training was there. And there was existing grooming within the facility as well. I personally think that that's why we're here, is to mitigate the differences between the written and the applicable. So I'm gonna go and say that.
Good point.
I think I think it it warrants this type of a situation and and granting.
I just wish we could get more information on why that vote was taken.
And and I understand that, but I don't think that's at our fingertips right now and quite honestly.
Unfortunately, it's not.
Right. It's to look at the situation, analyze all of the the factors involved and considering we already have training, we have the office, two offices next to it, that the owner is in the building and it's already approved that that they solicit this position. I I just see this going forward that it would be unnecessary hardship to the parties involved.
Now, John, you know, you know that daycare is children, correct, next to the dog training?
Right, but that's in daycare.
Right.
That co coexisting with the dog training already.
Right. I mean.
What gets me is if that dog training place, for whatever reason, was to close down, you couldn't put another one in.
He'd have a year.
Their grandfathered in because they were there.
Actually, the special exception goes with the property and they would be able to put another one in. It's not a grandfathering situation. It's a special exception situation, which, like a variance, goes with the property. It just has different requirements than a variance does.
So Dee, if he was to, if he was to leave that space for more than a year, he could go back and reopen?
Yes, because of the special exception that was granted for him to go in there initially to begin with.
Okay.
This, who who grants a special exemption, where does that come from? We do, okay. All right, I, yeah, just checking, just checking.
You weren't on it in 2015.
I mean, like I say, the thing that it just seems like should be the outstanding value to that space, you know, it's.
Well, I don't want this into our private discussion unless we need anything out of them so that we can move forward. Oh, we are, apologies.
We're closing.
My bad.
I'm gonna take a.
What if we were to, would you guys be interested in putting any sort of verbiage as far as something with that space? Like if she was to all of a sudden close up in two years, that would be the end of the special exception?
This is a variance.
Can, I don't even know if we can do that.
Yes, you can.
Yeah, we can do that. Would that be something?
Dan, what do you think about like, I I get what you're saying, but the bigger concern is, again, I I'm just struggling trying to figure out why they wouldn't want this use and I keep going back to noise.
Right.
You put something in there that's like, if you have, I don't know how to even, you know, put this into wording, but say, you know, you have two or three complaints within a year, you gotta agree to soundproof the thing or something, I I just don't know how to, I don't know where I'm going with this, but it's.
Right.
I mean, that's the concern and I feel like that's what I wanna be considerate of with the, you know, people in town and the neighbors in this shopping center is noise, so it's like.
I think at that point, I think at that point in time, you may be infringing on the rights and responsibilities of the code enforcement officer. By putting that kind of a condition.
Well, that's what I was just gonna mention, wouldn't that be under his jury? So if there wasn't an issue, wouldn't that be his 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 deal?
He would have other ways to deal with it if disturbing the others were an issue.
Right, okay. Like I say, I'm just spitballing, you know, you you kind of, you know.
Dan, I think you hit the nail on the head is it's to put a limitation on the usages goes with this this corporation that is coming in.
Right.
And after that fact.
Right.
She already has a a letter of recommendation, 30 years in this business, she's obviously, you know.
That's what.
All that's walking in with a scrub brush and saying, hey, you know, open up a doggy doggy cleaning facility.
I mean.
I see the spirit of in the intent here as being that you don't wanna take this this round peg and stick it in a square hole. But we have a bunch of round holes already in this building, so it fits, in my opinion. I don't see a problem with. I understand the voters voted for this, but we already have existing situations within this area. It is in a very remote area. It's not in the middle of the town, it doesn't have a lot of food services around it. It it's simply a good place for this for this business, in my humble opinion. Again, I the the vote on the 18th is the only thing I struggle with. And I think that's why we're here as a judicial board is to mitigate that and find the happiness in the people.
And like I say, it seems, I mean, according to that letter, she'd be an outstanding neighbor, you know. It seems like she still makes, you know, her time, you know, to, you know, to the animals and stuff like that, runs clinics. So like I say, I'm 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 torn, you know. The only thing that's holding me back is the letter, or the vote, rather, back in 2018. But again, I think maybe we could come up with something as far as a, you know, some sort of verbiage that it would go with the space and her business. She leaves, it's gone.
Yeah, that works and plus, like we said, if somebody has a huge problem with us, they can, they'd be here to speak against it or appeal, right?
True.
Well, like I say, I I just, I don't know. That that's my feelings. So I mean, if you wanna come up with some sort of a way we can work around this, that it, you know, it goes with her and her business only, we can ask Dee how we can go about that.
So Mr. Conley, are you seeking to possibly amend your motion to include a condition that the variance would expire with this tenant and this unit?
Yeah, so what do we, I'll I'll reread the motion and then add that.
Yes. Well, what you what you. We can do it two, one of two ways. We can do an amendment to the motion or you can withdraw this motion and make a new motion.
I think an amendment's probably fine, the board, you guys think that's.
It's a two-vote process then, because then you have to vote on the amendment and then on the motion.
Oh, okay.
So if you withdraw the motion, you can just make a new clean one.
All right, let's, that's that's cleaner, I think we should withdraw the motion.
Mr. Mr. Andy, withdraw your second?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, so I'm gonna make a new motion now to grant the variance request, Article 5, 220 dash 32 GB to allow a care and treatment of animals use at the property located at 134 Newton Road, tax map 70, lot 20, with a condition that if Refreshing Pause is to close or vacate the premise, that this variance is expires.
I second it.
Thank you.
Anything else, Dan, we wanna vote on this?
Yeah, let's, we're all set to vote, right?
Okay, Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Ethan Conley?
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Yes.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Jonathan Gifford?
Yes.
Thank you. Your vote is five zero zero, and the motion passes.
Dee, on the next, can I have a motion to grant on the second, Article twenty dash twenty-five?
Can I make a suggestion that if you're going to include the same condition, that you state it now, as opposed to wait until the end?
Ethan, why don't you take that, then?
Just a thought.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, I mean, if that, that's necessary for the strip mall, sure. All right, so I'll make a motion to grant the variance request from Article Five, two twenty, V-D ten, to allow a care and treatment of animals' use in a strip center, I'm sorry, strip mall, at the property located at one thirty-four Newton Road, Tax Map seventy, Lot twenty, with the condition that if Refreshing Pause is to terminate their business or vacate the premise, that this variance will expire.
A second.
Ready to vote? Ready to vote?
Ethan Conley?
Yes.
Jim Unger?
Yes.
Dan Lloyd?
Yes.
Jonathan Gifford?
Yes.
Gary Ingham?
Yes.
Your vote is five zero zero.
My dog is saying yes.
Your vote is five zero zero, and the motion passes. That's all I have for you folks, except that we should have a little "how do you do" to Ms. Barbara. Barb, you want to unmute yourself there, my friend? I met Barbara when I first started on the ZBA twenty years ago, and Barbara was one of my first mentors in the ZBA business, so I think she will be an amazing asset to the board. So if you have any questions for Barb, there she is.
Nice to have you aboard.
No comment. Welcome.
So you have.
You picked quite a night to come aboard.
That was pretty interesting.
I did send you a copy of Barbara's application form, and she has more than enough credentials. What I would need from this board to get Barbara going is to have a recommend, a vote to recommend to the board of selectmen that she be appointed as an alternate member for a three-year term.
Absolutely.
Is that you making that motion, sir?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody have any questions for Barbara, anything?
Welcome to the tribe.
May I call the vote, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think I ended with Ethan. Jim Unger?
Yes.
Dan Lloyd?
Absolutely.
Jonathan Gifford?
Yes.
Gary Ingham?
Most definitely.
Ethan Conley?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome, Barbara, we'll get your paperwork started. This is awesome. Awesome, awesome. So, I don't have anything else for you folks, except now you already know how your September agenda's gonna shake out, we'll be starting off with the ninety-three Plastow Road. If there's ever a time when you're looking through these cases, and you want me to get you some additional information, like I could have gotten you the planning board minutes from the discussion on the zoning change, I'm happy to do that, you just need to let me know what you want.
Could you get that for us and email it to us, just so we'll know what it was all about?
Sure.
Because I'm sure this is gonna be the last time we hear it.
Sure. Be happy to.
Thank you.
No problem.
Now, just a quick, Dee, just a quick question, I was wondering, where it says care and treatment of animals, is that because that is how, that's the terminology in the zoning?
That's the terminology in the zoning. It's, I mean, it's very difficult to make zoning that is one-size-fits-all for everything, and that's why you folks exist, because we can't make zoning be one-size-fits-all. So when there's a unique circumstance, they come to you, but they do have to, the zoning ends up being written a little more of a general nature, so that it covers more than it doesn't.
Right. So in reality, like that vote in two thousand eighteen could have been a doggy daycare that had dogs outside all day, and was barking and bothering neighbors or something, but we'd never know.
It could have been. It was, I know that it was somebody that went to the planning board with complaints and asked the planning board to consider it. I do know that there was also input to the planning board from the health officer regarding the particular change to the ordinance. That much I do know.
Yeah.
But when you're in deliberations, I can't say that kind of stuff.
I know.
And it puts me on the spot, because I want to help you, I want to, but then it looks like I'm feeding you information that's not within my, my authority to do. So. Everybody good? You guys did a good job tonight? I think you did.
Are we still on, are we off?
We can't. You need to close the meeting to go off broadcast.
All right, now, let's, let's close the meeting so we can get off broadcast.